Sit back and enjoy the ride.
Good evening, this is the Town of Carver Office of Planning and Community Development Meeting of October 2nd, 2012 at 7:00 o'clock in Meeting Room 1. We have, our first is old business, but that's a public hearing at 7:15, so we shall go on to Planning Board Notes to fill in for 15 minutes before our first hearing.
Want to say the Pledge of Allegiance?
Oh, Pledge of Allegiance, please, yeah, I'm sorry. If we could all stand to do the Pledge of Alleg- say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, or nation, undrawn, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's one of those triple E's.
It's a stink box, man. Don't want to squish that one. That was one of those stink boxes.
Gonna thank Fran up and back for reminding me with the cue card about that. I forgot, almost forgot that. All right, so we'll go on to Planning Board Notes for this evening to start the evening off. Does anybody wish to speak?
I'm thinking. If you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, I can-
Please, go ahead. We have 15 minutes before our first public hearing.
Let the board know that the Redevelopment Authority met last night, had a pretty good meeting. We have decided to and voted to give the Wade Street property back to the town and see if the town can come up with a plan. We're having a lot of problems on trying to move that piece of property, so we voted that last night. Very happy to announce that the North Carver project that we have ongoing with JPA Management, which is the cornerstone's property, the water line's in, and today we're pumping water to them. So that was a great project for us to get involved with, us partnering with the North Carver Water District in that property and get them on the water system and provide them water, so we're very happy with that. And as Redevelopment Authority always looking for things to do, we reached out with the Carver Community Block Grant Program. And we had, we were approached by them. They have a piece of property that they're a little bit over on their expenditures on their estimated repairs of this one piece of property. Redevelopment Authority last night voted unanimously to get involved with that and to make up the difference. It was like a $900 investment that we were gonna do, so just giving a little bit back to the town and in the community and helping some blighted sights and working towards a common goal and make things a little bit better, so IDA's been pretty busy, so we're happy about that. I think that's all I got off the top of my head, and I know I have more, but that's enough. Thank you.
Thank you. I have nothing. Only been back for a few weeks. We missed you.
I have nothing, Mr. Chairman.
Chad?
No, nothing.
Add one other thing.
Sure.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to remind everybody tomorrow night we have a solar bylaw committee meeting tomorrow night at 5:30. We're getting closer, so we have the survey went out. Anybody out there that received a survey form, please fill it out. We're looking for information from the community. Please send it back. We greatly appreciate that information as we move forward coming up with the bylaw. So tomorrow night here downstairs, right?
Yes.
Downstairs at Town Hall, 5:30. Thank you. I told you I'd remember something.
All right, we'll go to Planner's Notes.
I can help fill up the time. If you didn't notice, it's maybe, it's subtle, but the Kelleher Landscaping Site, they have the building permit and they just started some of the site work, I think yesterday. I did talk to Kelleher and he is moving along and he did hire Buzz Artiano to do his construction, so we know what's gonna be done right. I got a phone call today, as you know, you permitted the N-Star staging area behind Cape Cod Ready Mix. We got another call from N-Star today and they may be looking to, and I'm not, they were a little vague and I've asked them to come in. They may wanna expand the facility over on Paltoa, not with a transformer, but with another structure. That's all he could tell me, and I said, "Well, you're gonna have to come in and show me what you're talking about, 'cause I don't understand what that means." And as you recall, some of the members, we had some issues with that site in the past. And so whether it con- you know, I'll work with the chairman on whether it constitutes full site plan review or a special permit or neither. I just don't know, but I did get that call today. I did get a call from Norfolk Ram on Deacon, as you know, I've been updating you on the sewage treatment plant, and they did get DEP approval on that, and they're putting their site plans together and they'll be applying for site plan review on the sewage treatment plant. I'm glad Will brought up the CDBG program. I know this is something near and dear to Ed's heart, but they are rounding it out now and completion will be done on November 10th. That is the drop dead deadline. We've helped 18 homeowners. The 18th is the one Will's talking about on West Street where we're only allowed to spend $35,000 per unit, and this one's $35,915, and the Redevelopment Authority came through with the remaining monies. Incidentally, there was another project in Halifax, another house in Halifax that was substantially higher, and we got Habitat for Humanity to come in and fill the gap, so we try to use as many resources as we can. The last thing I, and I'm, you know, I did talk to Will a little bit about this, but I'm anticipating there's gonna be a special town meeting in November, maybe early December. I haven't talked to the town administrator about this, but I know there's bills to be paid, and I know that at least some people in the solar bylaw committee are expecting a public hearing to happen so that a solar bylaw can be brought forth. I know the committee's not ready yet, but it's something to think about, that if you're gonna anticipate having a warrant article with a solar bylaw, you gotta anticipate a public hearing, which means I have to publish and have at least three weeks' notice.
We'll talk about that tomorrow night.
So I think be prepared at your next meeting. I may have a date suggested in November for a public hearing. Lastly, regarding solar, at 10:00 this Friday, we're having a ribbon-cutting press conference at the solar panels on Route 44, and we're expecting quite a crowd of dignitaries and all the people that have helped make that project work. It's up and running. Nothing's gotten stolen in a while. There's a lot of security up there now, and it's probably the reason. And just, you know, for the public, that did not cost the town one penny, and it's saving the town maybe as close to $10,000 or $11,000 a year, and it's a demonstration that can be used all over the country, and it's one of the top, one of the first along the state-divided highway that we know of. There are a couple, but we're up there and it puts Carver on the map, so we're pretty excited about this press conference.
What time was that again, Jack?
10:00. I think that's, oh, and one other thing, I got a little more time. We are going to be applying for another round of CDBG block grant. As I said, November 10th will be the end of this round. If we're lucky enough, and it's getting tighter all the time and more competitive, but if we're lucky enough to be awarded a new grant, we're looking to expand the target area from Crystal Lake and Bates Pond. We still keep those, but to include Cranberry Village and Pine Tree Village. And we're, and that, if we're lucky enough to get it, it would be effective July 1st, so we're hoping. We did a good job, and we'd like to continue.
Well, we still have a few minutes. One other thing, I guess I would like to say is that the Carver Local Housing Partnership has helped, how many families have we helped? Is it eight families now?
Yep, with the foreclosures.
Foreclosure, and we still have money to help more, and anybody interested that needs some help to pay their mortgage for whatever financial crisis they may be in right now should contact Jack.
Yep.
And we'll put him, steer him in a direction where they can meet some people to help them. And it's, it's helped some people, and hopefully we have some money and we can help some more people that may need that. All right, I guess we can go on to the approval of minutes of September 18th, 2012. Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve as written.
Second.
There's a motion to approve in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous. All right, so we still have some more time, so why don't we go to correspondence?
I do have a few things. You'll see in here, there's a notice of a public hearing. This is gonna take place on Monday, October 29th at 7:00 PM at the library. This is for a required public hearing for the potential improvements of 58 between South Meadow and Silva Street, Purchase Street, where we're doing 2.3 miles and it's gonna be fully landscaped and all kinds of streetscape amenities, and we're pretty excited about it. And as they move along in the design phase, their Mass DOT is required to conduct along with the town a certain amount of public hearings, so this is one. Also, you know, if, especially the new members, they're, we're always asking if you're interested in getting some professional development. There's going to be an essential, Water and Cranberries, an essential connection at a workshop for municipal employees, gonna take place on October 19th at the library, and if you would like to go, let me know, we'll fill it out and pay for you to go. I have gone to this many when I first got here, and it's very helpful and you learn a lot about the industry that dominates our town. Next is, I'm not sure exactly why the planning board got this letter, but you are CC'd on this. This is from Ediville, from Brenda, about a hearing that took place in front of the Board of Selectmen regarding the conversion of an oil tank to a propane tank. I'll just, you know, you're a CC'd, so I put it in your packet. I don't think there's any reason to discuss it, but it's up to you. And lastly, I didn't make a copy of this. I may have emailed you some form of this, but the Citizens Planner Trading Collaborative has workshops, again, that we can help, we'll pay for, for you. I'm gonna pass this around. I've gone to many of these in my career, and I know other members have gone to these, and if you're interested, let me know and we'll sign you up. Look at that. I couldn't have done that if I tried.
It is. So that was, that was the end of the correspondence, Jack?
Yep.
All right, okay. So now it's 7:15, so we'll go on to old business. We have a public hearing, a special permit for Stephanie Billings, Hobby Kennel. We have a public hearing notice in accordance with the provisions of the Town of Carver zoning bylaw, the Carver Planning Board would hold, will hold a public hearing on October 2nd, 2012 at 7:15 PM in the Carver Town Hall, Meeting Room 1, on the application of Stephanie Billings requesting a special permit pursuant to sections 2230, 3570, and 5300 of the Carver zoning bylaw located on 67 Center Street in Carver, Mass. to develop a hobby commercial kennel and exceed the signage dimensional requirements. Any persons interested and wishing to be heard should appear at the time and place designated. A copy of the plan is on file at the town clerk's office and may be reviewed during normal business hours. Carver Planning Board, Bruce Mackey, Chair. Published date, September 14th, 2012 and September 21st, 2012.
I'll just quickly, in your packet, I'll go through these after Ms. Billings does her presentation, is a little sketch of the sign she proposes, a sketch of her driveway and where she plans on-
Thank you.
-on putting some of this, this facility, I guess. I also have correspondence from the fire chief, the acting building commissioner, and the Board of Health, and we are blessed to have our animal control officers here to speak as well at the invitation that we put out to them, and I know Stephanie has talked to them. So that's what I got for you.
All right, thank you.
Hello.
Good evening.
My name's Stephanie Billings, and I live at 67 Center Street. I want to start a small doggy daycare in my home, and it's basically, I just want to finish off the basement, so it's an impervious surface, you know, I'll epoxy the cement floor, put up this called a cement board that actually helps keep like fungus and bacteria off, and then actually put up another plastic coating onto the wall, so if I wanted to wash the entire room, I could, and then fence off from the basement door over to a portion of my yard, so they'd have like an outside area to go outside and play. And it's, I want every, like, pretty much, I've worked with animals for 18 years, it's pretty much the only thing I know. I've worked in the animal hospital for nine years where I actually ran the boarding kennel that had up to 68 dogs. I was in charge of, you know, reservations and cleaning, taking care of everybody, you name it. I did it pretty much. Client relations, I have a lot of clientele that is, wants me to do something, and I just haven't gotten around to it yet. So I don't, I, but the permit, I think that is causing the issue is, it says it's a permit for a kennel, and I don't want anybody to think that it's gonna be an overnight thing. It's only gonna be Monday through Friday. It's not gonna be overnight at all or on the weekends. It is pretty much just for, you know, less than 10 dogs to come on, to come over when mom and dad are at work, and they can come and I'll, we'll run around and go for walks and play and do all sorts of fun stuff. And of course, if it's raining out, we'll be inside. If it's nice out, we'll be outside. I do have ways to keep noise down, 'cause I know that's a big issue, is noise complaints and everything of dogs barking, and for the most part, dogs bark. Dogs bark 'cause they're bored, they wanna come in, they're not getting the attention that they want. And I mean, playing with them, running around with them, making sure that they're happy, they're not gonna bark as much. If it does seem to be a problem, like with the fence part, when they're outside, there is a green mesh that if you look around on like tennis courts, they have green mesh around the tennis courts. That will provide screen, screen, so the dogs can't see anybody on the bogs, 'cause I know when dogs see people, they're like, "Oh, I wanna play, who's that person?", they're gonna bark at them. So if I screen that all in, it'll be like an outside screened-in area, so they won't be able to see the neighbors or the people in the bogs. It'll just be like, it'll just kinda like extend the yard a little bit. As for vaccines and stuff, I've worked in the veterinary field for so long, vaccines are extremely important, so everybody will be required to have rabies vaccine, distemper vaccine, and a kennel cough vaccine, and that's before they even get evaluated. So when they come over to meet, you know, my dog Drake and see if he gets along with them, 'cause he's gonna, the alpha male. If they, they don't have their vaccines available for me to look at, then the dog can stay in the car, and I'll evaluate them on the day they wanna bring me their stuff. The insurance part of the business, I already have a quote from an insurance company saying that they would insure my business on the property, and so all that would be covered. Oh, the trash pick-up, 'cause people, the sanitation and trash and everything, there is a business that will come around twice a week to pick up trash, and what I did at the hospital, when we would clean, we had a huge fenced-in area and we would poop-a-scoop all the time, constantly, and we'd have a big barrel, and you'd put it in with a trash bag, and you'd put the poop in there, and you'd put the lid on, and you wouldn't even know that there was anything in there. We threw it in a big dumpster every day, so we throw it away every day. So my plan is to constantly pick it up and put it in the barrel, and then like have maybe two barrels, and then one will go to the, on Tuesday when trash pick-up, and then Wednesday I'll have one for Thursday and then Friday. And then if it comes to Friday where, 'cause you can't have trash pick-up over the weekend, then I'll bring it to the dump, 'cause we have a dump sticker, so that we could do that way. And I also... I wanna make sure everybody knows it's not a grooming facility. I don't groom dogs at all. There's not gonna be a tub, it's basically just gonna be a big room with some toys in it that will get sanitized every day. The whole room is actually gonna get washed down every day with those Clarks wipes, and I can swivel the floor and make it nice and clean. There's, there's a lot of businesses on our road, it's not just a, I mean, it's not really, it's a neighborhood, but it's more of a main road, I would think of it as, where there's a horse stable, there's Ferreras excavating at the end of the road, there's a boutique on our road. So I don't think that adding, you know, six to 10 dogs to my house with little sign that says "Anti-Step Doggy Daycare" will decrease anybody's property value, 'cause I am finishing the basement and I will be fencing off portion of the yard, so if I keep the basement an impervious surface where the dogs can't destroy anything, then it would actually kinda increase the property value, I would think. Let's see, what else? Oh, traffic, if anybody was worried about traffic or whatnot, it's only gonna be, it'll be less than 10 dogs a day, so Monday through Friday, so it really would only increase traffic a very, very minimal. I would, it's not like, you know, Kierkegaard's fail when they open up and you can't get down 58, or when Ediville's open up for the festival lights and you can't get down Rochester. I think that that is, that's it, but I will, you know, as the board, any rule you give me or anything that you want me to do to make sure that it is safe and happy and healthy, I will do absolutely anything. As for evaluating dogs, I won't have any dog aggressive dogs or people aggressive dogs on the property at all. I don't want that around my daughter or anything like that, so evaluating the dog, I'll know within 10 minutes if the dog is gonna be a brat to another dog, and if they are, they're only gonna have like a one, a one-shot deal. If they're fresh, then they, they get put in a kennel, and I call mom and dad and they come get the dog, and then that's it, they don't get to come anymore. I have been writing up, which I have a lawyer to make sure that everything's right, writing up how, what the rules are gonna be and make sure it's okay, and all that stuff. So that's pretty much, I think it.
All right, does anybody on the, on the board have any questions?
I think I'm gonna hold off for now. Probably have more questions after our site visit. Thank you.
You wanna also wait till the site visit?
Yeah.
Oh, you have questions, okay.
I think I read both, I read the document, the letter from the abudas, Jack, sent around to us, and I thought there were some very good points in that, in that letter, and I thought the applicant tried to address as many as she could. I think there's still some things that have to be taken into consideration, but I think a site visit, so we can determine exactly how close the neighbors are, would be a tremendous help for me on the board as we look at what the noise levels might be. I think the fact that she's identified other businesses in the neighborhood that are not similar, but of a same, of a similar nature, because they're not retail, is interesting. So I think the site visit's gonna go a long way to identifying if these issues that the abudas have brought up can be resolved. And I think ultimately that's our job, is to, is to see that the neighbors, the abudas are not, are not harmed either their property values or their lives, so a site visit will go a long way, and I'm looking forward to it.
I feel the same way as my two colleagues. I really wanna see, do a site visit first, and then I can ask questions.
Same. All right, I guess everybody would like to go on site, take a look at it, see that, and that would, that would be a good way to determine how close they are to everything and where fencing might be placed, whatever, and you can actually tell us where the kennels are gonna be and, you know, where your fencing is gonna be.
Are all to, no other question?
Ed, Kevin, did you have a-
I agree with them, yes. Site visit would be great. Thank you, Mr. Hunt.
How could you miss them? How could you miss them?
This is a special project.
That's right. It is a special, yeah.
Ed might not be here tomorrow, like me.
Could be in Mississippi.
Now, you always want all six of you, if you could, because you never know.
All right, so let's-
You want me to go through the correspondence?
Are you? I think the, the board has said what they're gonna say. I think we could open this up to the public.
You want me to go through the correspondence?
Yeah, sure. Oh, yeah, that's right, that would-
From the Fire Department, he, I'll just read it. "The project seems pretty straightforward, and the narrative Stephanie mentions adding a smoke detector. It's required to be photoelectric, hardwired with a battery backup. If not, she can use battery-operated." Did you talk to them already? Okay. "She also must have carbon monoxide detectors in the basement. My suggestion is a combination smoke codeetector. She just needs to be aware, if she does go to the, go that route, the device has to talk in Massachusetts. Some stores are selling non-talking versions, which are illegal in this age. She should also have at least a 10-pound fire extinguisher mounted to the wall near the egress. Other than that, as long as the public will not be in the basement, she has things covered." The building commissioner, as you know, the building commissioner is no longer here, resigned, but we have someone covering. He's a retired building commissioner from Bridgewater, East Bridgewater maybe. He said, "Based on my past experience, my only concern would be noise control." Next is the Board of Health, and I'm gonna have Stephanie kinda answer these. I did meet with Stephanie and the Board of Health agent on this memo. Did I get the address wrong? Is it 64 Center?
No, it's 67.
It's 67.
Yeah.
"How many dogs is she allowed to have by permit? A hobby kennel is anything from five to 10, and a commercial kennel's more than that. Both are allowed by special permit from the planning board." So in my interpretation, you can limit it as long as you keep her competitive and the site can, in your opinion, can handle it and address concern to any number you wish above five. "When the dogs are outside in the pen playing area, how are we going to control any possible noise for the abudas, and how will outdoor feces be controlled?"
Basically by playing and making sure that they're not barking. If I do have a barker, then, you know, he'll be in a lot. And as for like picking up feces, anytime anybody goes to the bathroom, I'm gonna wanna pick it up right away, just 'cause you don't want that kinda stuff in your grass. So that'll get picked up and put in the trash barrel every single time somebody goes potty, so I'll keep an eye on it. So it's not everywhere, 'cause you don't want dogs walking in it and then bringing it in the basement. You don't wanna walk in it and bring it in the basement. It'd be bad, so. And, oh, the number four was the mention, the trash pick-up.
Which you mentioned, yeah. I was still thinking about this noise thing. I think that's where all five, six of you were saying, when you get there, you'll understand it better.
I could get a picture too of the screening that I'm talking about, 'cause it literally, it's like, it'll be a black chain link fence with little links, and then the screening is actually, you, you can't see through it, but it does have little tiny holes, and so the wind can get through it, but, and rain can get through it, but the dogs wouldn't be able to see people on the bogs. We had it at the animal hospital, it worked really well, 'cause people would come, drive down to the parking lot and daycare, we had a daycare there that had 30 dogs, it was nuts. And they would, when people drove by, before we put that screening up, the dogs would go nuts, and you'd have all 30 dogs going crazy, 'cause there's another dog on the other side of the fence. So we put the screening up and it totally stopped.
How high is the fence?
Six foot.
Six foot?
Would you give us an example of exactly what that's gonna be?
Sure, I can do that.
Excuse me, I just wanted to ask a question about the fence. Are you weaving that through the chain link, or does that get tied up against the fence?
It can, it can do either. The weaving is a little difficult, but what I, what we did at the hospital was we, we put it on the outside and we basically like zip-tied it, so if a zip tie broke off, we could fix it real fast and make sure it didn't fall down.
Did you have a problem with the heavy winds?
No. I had, well, my yard is very windy- No, I had, well, my yard is very windy, but we didn't have a problem at the hospital with winds. If it blew down, um, or whatnot, we would just fix it the next day. Like during the hurricane and stuff, like we had pieces of it that would like flap over and we'd just fix it.
Next, is there a prescribed water and feeding program for the kennel? For example, will dog owners be supplying their own food for their dogs or will the kennel be providing food? And how will this food be stored and made airtight to prevent rodent issues?
And my answer to that was I'm not, it's not a kennel, so I won't be feeding anybody because nobody's staying overnight. I will have cookies, like, but they'll just be like in a little dog cookie bin, but they won't be, it won't be a food, there won't be any food storage at all.
And how are the cookies maintained?
And the little cute little cookie, um, with little dogs on it and it has, it's a seal tight top.
Okay, so it is any a tight top?
It is a seal tight, yeah. It's one of the ones that you can get at Bed Bath &amp; Beyond.
Um, and I think the next to Stephanie answered, are the dogs to be kept overnight? No. And he's the board of health saying no grooming, so. He's telling you. Before you, Mr. Chair, before you open this up, I would like to have the animal control officer, um, talk to you about her.
Sure.
Findings, if you will.
Please.
Yeah, how are you?
Hi.
I think the only concerns that we, I had already talked to.
Excuse me, could we have your name, please?
It's Kathy Salee. I'm the ACO for Carver. I had already talked to Stephanie. Um, I think our only concerns were the vaccinations. Making sure everybody has their rabies, distemper and the kennel cough. That was really our only main concerns.
How, Kathy, how do we monitor that? How do we know, how does the board know that Stephanie's dogs have those?
She'd have to get copies. Um, she can bring them up to town hall, um, the clerk's office.
To you?
Either the selectman's office or the clerk's office, um, and just have them on, on record.
I actually have, I could scan them into my computer and send them via email.
Any other issues that you, no.
No, not for animal control, no. I'm just making sure everybody's contained and no fighting and.
Can I ask another question? Are there any other kennels similar to this in Carver that you could steer them?
There's no doggy daycares in Carver, no.
Oh, okay.
Nope.
So with the vaccination, when the people bring their animals to you, they have to show you the certificate of their rabies shot or et cetera?
Their vet could fax it over to me or they can hand, they can hand it to me. And it, it will say right on there, if their receipt from their vet will say, you know, rabies was given and it's due this day, distemper was given, it's due this day. A lot of them, a lot of their programs, um, just because I work in the animal hospital, but a lot of programs will have right on the bottom reminders and it'll say like when they're due. And like what the vet actually gave them and everything, so.
And that's what you're going to fax to the?
Yes, yep, yep. I could do that.
Question, Mr. Chair, just to follow up on that. Is that something that you keep on file for each pet and do you monitor that?
Yes.
So that way, if they're not in compliance, they're out?
Yes, I actually have, um, I'm purchasing a computer program that is, um, I implement it right into the computer. And it'll, it'll throw me an alert. So when I, when I log on and check somebody in, like say check somebody in for, for the day. If, or even like coming up, it'll send, send me out reminders like every day, hey Steph, you know, so and so Kona is coming up due for his rabies. So then I can let the owner know. A lot of times people, they forget stuff and we did that at the hospital all the time. People would come in for boarding and I would say, hey, you know, so and so is coming in for, is going to need vaccines while they're here. Do you want to get them done? And they would be like, oh, yeah, yeah, that'd be great. But for daycare, if they didn't come to this hospital, like we had our own hospital, so it was easy to get, oh, just get them done. If they didn't go, we would, we would call them before, or when they called to make the reservation, we'd say, well, you're going to be coming due for this on, while you're staying. Can you get it done? And then have your vet fax it over. So it's, it's like second nature to me. I, it's something that I will be more anal on than anything else because I know better.
Just another question of concern, I guess, um, now that we're talking through the process, I'm very happy that you came tonight. The, what's the process in place that you have if we have an incident with a dog? Do you have a process put in place now for notification of the town dog officer?
Oh, so say if a dog gets into a fight with another dog, gets hurt kind of thing or?
Bad or else, uh, uh, say that one gets loose somehow and bites a neighbor or bites a kid or something like that. I know the standard procedures that, that they would take, but what's, what do you have in procedures or how to address that issue? Do you contact the dog officer right away? And I want to make sure that we have some type of mechanism there that it's, it's got to be monitored. So that if there's a violation or something like that, I don't want you to end up in front of the selectmen. For not having rules and there not being a bind and then this is a free for all and not indicating that's going to happen. I just want to maybe look for some guidance from the dog, dog officer and.
Definitely, um, to make sure that they don't escape, um, would be, I, I'll have two gates and both gates will have locks on them so the dogs won't be able to open the gate. And then, uh, the fence itself, and I mean, I built, we, I helped build the animal hospital, the fencing and everything. We made it like Fort Knox. The fence actually went in the ground a good foot and got concreted around it. So there was no way the dogs could dig under. Or, and if we had anybody that was even remotely a jumper or a climber, um, we held them on a leash, but that's all going to be part of the evaluation process. Because if a dog comes in and they show any signs of aggression towards me, I'm not going to want that dog there. So I wouldn't let that dog come. I would say, you know, he, even if they're a little shady, I mean, you can tell right away if they're going to be a little weird, no matter how you approach them. If the dog's like, hey, I love you, or if he's like, eh, then you're going to know. And then I'm not going to want them there because then that poses a huge risk to me. But I would absolutely call the dog officer if something was about to happen. If they got out or anything like that, I would call her right away.
Okay.
Now you're going to be taking them from all over different towns. It's not just going to be people that live in Carver?
Yes, I, I have a couple that, um, that want to come that they're, they live in Plymouth.
Are they going to, when they come to you, are they going to bring a copy that their, their dog is licensed?
Oh, I don't know. That's a good question. I could do that.
I mean, how would you know if the dog is?
Four.
How does, how does town? I'm getting a no over.
We didn't, we didn't in.
From our new ag com member.
I don't think that would make a difference. No. That's not, it's out of our jurisdiction. Yeah, anything outside.
Does every, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, does every town, I know we require licenses. I know our town clerk's all over that. But does every town require a license?
Yes.
Our surrounding towns.
Every town and every city requires a dog license if you have a dog.
Go ahead, Ed.
Want to go back to Will's point about the vaccinations? Everything you said, will it apply if you get dogs from Plymouth? You'll be able to deal with the same people in the town of Plymouth. You're not that far from Plymouth, so I, I don't, wouldn't rule out that you would get Plymouth dogs.
No, well, it'll be, it'll basically come straight to, from their vet. So it'll be, any vet from anywhere can fax it to me. I will actually, I can call the vet and get them faxed over myself, um, but I will definitely make sure that everybody has their vaccines before and.
Well, my, my concern is the license. Will, when they come, will they show you a copy of the license?
I can, I can make that a requirement. I, I don't see why people wouldn't, wouldn't do that. It's, that's pretty basic. That's easy.
A lot of people don't license their dog.
Well, we'll make sure they.
They have the little tag if they're licensed.
Yeah, well, you know, sometimes the tags are two and three years old.
Well, if, if they get, if she gets a dog and the tag's three years old, then.
That's why I have dog tags.
But every year they get a new, they have to be licensed every year.
I want to, a couple of quick questions. How, how large is your, your, your site? How many acres?
Two acres.
Was it?
It's about two acres.
Okay, so the footnote wouldn't apply. Last question is, um, the other businesses on Center Street, Plymouth Street, the, the horse stable, the tree farms. Are any of those in close proximity to you or in, or to your abutting residential?
My, the, um, actual cranberry plant is basically my backyard. So my yard, it's the ba, there's a cranberry plant that's right behind us. That's on Pond Street, but it's right there. And then there's the boutique that's four doors down. There's, uh, Ferreras excavating that's at the end of our road. And then there's a landscaping place that's right next to that.
Cranberry is Clement Pappas? So they're noisy for eight weeks.
Oh, they're pretty noisy. They knocked down our wall this year.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, um, thank you, Jack. I guess we can open this up to the public. If anybody would like to speak, uh, step up to the microphone and, uh, give us a name and address.
That's for the camera more than. They're on TV.
Hi, my name's Michelle Dagnan. This is my husband, Matt Dagnan. We actually live next door. We're 69 Center Street. So I think when you see on your site visit, you'll be able to establish there is no sound blocking device. We literally abut the cranberry bog into wide open space. So there is no worry really to, um, to block out any noise and that's a huge concern for us. They currently already have dogs on their property as well as in addition to these multiple dogs. And we hear their, their own dogs consistently. I'll give you a prime example. Wednesday, um, there was a dog over. I don't know if it was an interview or if she had had somebody over. It was one dog and I could hear one dog barking consistently from my basement. So, and I also work from home, so this is a huge factor for me. This is going to contribute to my job performance and my job effectiveness. My husband and I, for, while it is a Monday through Friday business, my husband's home more than 50% of the time, Monday through Friday. So this would impact our daily life. We have two young children. I'm very concerned for the safety issue. Obviously the vaccinations that was discussed this evening and I appreciate that, but I'm really concerned for safety. Their own dogs are fenced in and have escaped multiple times. So these are dogs that they know. I'm really concerned for a dog that they don't take care of daily. That it could put my children at risk, myself, if I have a guest to my home or any neighbors. We have gone and asked all of the surrounding neighbors that would be impacted and everyone is in disagreement. There isn't anyone that wants, um, for it to be approved. And they've all signed to indicate that they agree with that. You know, the level of noise, I do see, she did indicate that there would be some sort of noise blocking device. I don't see how that would really make that much of a difference. Because there is no way really, there's no structure to, um, kind of absorb any of the noise. Wind travels, things like that. It's, there's no way. It's just going to carry the noise, the sanitation. I think the same is going to come when it comes to smell. If it's only being picked up twice a week. You know, on a hot day in the summer, humidity, I think the smell is going to carry as well because again, there's nothing to block anything behind us. It's a wide open space. You know, the business being open at 6:00 AM, I don't think that's appropriate either. Um, 6:00 AM isn't, you know, noy, additional noise at 6:00 AM is a concern for us as well. People coming in and out of the driveway, I understand it may not be multiple cars, but it is already a very busy street and people do drive pretty fast on that street already. So that is a concern for us, adding additional traffic onto that street as well. You know, we have discussed the sanitation, um, and not being able to absorb any of the noise. I do think it would be a, um, for our home, I do think it would be a diminution, decrease in the neighborhood and the resale value. I can't see many people wanting to openly buy a home next to a day, a, a dog kennel, daycare, whatever the proper terminology. I apologize if I don't have that. I don't see a lot of people that being a selling point or an advantage for them. You know, we're, we're anxious about that. You know, you should have in the luxury of your home, peace and quiet. And I don't think that that would be established. I think this is something that on a daily basis, we would probably struggle with. And that's not really something that, you know, we're looking for and we're, we are really concerned with that, the noise level. I don't think there's going to be a way to mask that amount of noise. I just don't. You know, we're also concerned, there's already multiple dogs on the property that are their own pets. How many are going to be allowed to be established? Are they going to be incorporated into the, this portion of the, the daycare or are those going to be housed separately? Is that, is there a maximum number of animals that can be allowed on site? That, you know, that's also a concern for us as well. There is, I did check, there is no necessity. This is not a detrimental need to the community if we do not implement this. There's within five, within 10 miles, there's five of these located. So there's no need, there's no necessity for it. I feel like granting it would be a convenience versus, um, you know, something that the community actually requires. I don't think that it is. There is a commercial groomer, um, within three miles of that home address, um, that is in a business zoned area. So again, I don't think there's a need for this. I think it would be something that would be being asked for based on a convenience. So we're just, we would really like to express our concerns that, you know, I don't know that those noise blocking devices are, are going to, um, be as effective as, you know, as thought. And it's really, you know, we have a pool, we have an outdoor area, we have two young kids. We really enjoy being outside and I think this is going to be really detrimental to how we continue to live our lifestyle. I think it will be extremely, um, difficult to, you know, block out that noise and I don't think we should have to be required to do so.
Also, I just want to point out, I'm just a little bit confused on the technology of what, with the terminology that we're asking for. I mean, she's asking for a hobby slash commercial kennel. In your bylaws, it's pretty different between of what you're allowed to have. A hobby is only allowed to have six to 10 and a commercial is 11 plus. I'm a little bit confused of what she's actually applying for. It can't really be both.
Well, I think at the time when Ms. Billings, um, applied, she wasn't sure. And I think now it's six dogs, so I think we know.
So if we do that, would, if we did.
They would limit to the number.
A hobby, it would not be a commercial, correct?
Sounds that way.
So can a hobby serve as a business? Because again, according to the bylaws, I didn't think a hobby could serve as a business.
A hobby, well, i- i- it's allowed by special permit from the planning board. Whether it's a business or not, doesn't matter. It's a, it's a land use issue.
Okay, thank you.
We appreciate it.
We'll, we'll take a look at a lot of these concerns when we do the site walk and.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Is there anyone else that would, uh, like to speak? All right, someone, oh.
I don't believe I'm doing this, but she seems like a really nice person and I'm very sorry I'm expressing myself. But I live on Old Center Road and I have a husband who's very old.
Your name, please?
We can hear dogs barking now and it's terrible. One dog sets off another dog in the neighborhood.
Excuse me, could you give us your name and address, please?
Okay, it's Rosemary Kirk and I live on 28 Old Center Street. So I'm kind of like, if you took a street, you'd go, there's one house, like a log cabin and then her house. Now I can tell you sound carries. I woke up yesterday morning with a dog that got loose and someone yelling, trying to get that dog. And I was sound asleep and heard them outside. I have a neighbor who has a tiny little dog. When that dog barks, I can hear him inside my house. I mean, the thought of having six dogs and I have grandkids that come all the time, seven little kids. And the chance, and when they walk, the dogs know that they're going to walk the dog up on Old Center Street where there's a lot of room to walk a dog where there isn't traffic. So all that poop and pee is going to be near our property. I'm sorry, I'm very sorry, but if I have anything to do with it, I never would have moved to Carver. If I thought there was going to be dog kennels and that little boutique she's talking about is a little room on somebody's house. And Ferrari is off the main road. It's not off of, um, Center Street. So I hope you really investigate this because I think it's terrible and I'm surprised that more people aren't upset about it. Thank you.
Can I ask you a question, please?
Could, uh?
Could I ask you a question, please? I am. I don't know if I missed it or, or not. The, the dog that you hear barking, the little dog, is that coming from her?
No, it's not. It's coming from a neighbor's yard in the house. The dog is never outside. But I'm saying I can hear that dog in my house barking. There's a dog that's left outside that's right next to her property that when he hears anything, he starts barking. It sets off another dog that's next door to us. So all I can imagine is when these dogs in the kennel start barking, it's just going to set every dog in the neighborhood off. I personally have a bunny rabbit, so I don't make any noise. And I like the other people to keep it that way.
I believe we have a noise ordinance. I think it's set at seven o'clock in the morning. Is that? I'm trying to find it in here.
No one be in there.
No, I think there's a noise ordinance. I think it's from seven to 11. No, I think there's a noise ordinance, I think it's from seven to eleven, after.
I can check that out.
I think the noise, yeah, I think it goes from seven to eleven. Prior, you have a complaint, and after you have a complaint, but I believe between seven and eleven.
Now, you have some, uh, dogs yourself? How many dogs do you have?
Um, I have three shepherds, and then I have one husky, but one of my shepherds isn't doing good, so he might be around for the next couple of weeks. But, um, one of the shepherds I'm talking about, Drake, is going to be the.
Excuse me? It's mostly for people at home.
Yes. Drake will be my, um, tester dog, 'cause he's extremely dog friendly and people friendly. Baron is gonna be stationed in the house, where he won't be around anybody. He's basically just to protect the house, 'cause the house got robbed a couple of years ago, and he's in there. And Kylie, um, she doesn't usually make a peep unless she's, uh, like, outside, so she's inside all the time. But they won't be, the only one that will be part of the daycare will be Drake. But that's why I said six dogs, 'cause it goes up to ten, and I have four as of right now. But I would only go, I would only go six, 'cause I wouldn't wanna go past the allowance, you know what I mean? I didn't wanna do that, so.
So, that, that would make a total of six. There's, you people that, that are neighbors, um, have you ever had any problems with barking from the dogs that are there now?
Yeah, we can hear the dogs.
That'd be Kylie, she's an escape artist.
Right, if it's the same structure, fenced in type of structure that they already have, they can't dog, so it's gonna use that for the the dogs when they're outside playing for activities time. It's happening, and it's happening, I mean, our kids, like I said, were outside daily. I can't imagine that a screen is gonna permit these dogs are not seeing us and barking consistently. I mean, that's a lot of dogs to be barking, ten dogs to be barking, it's a lot, and you'll see how close our properties are. They are close, and there is, there is one thing to absorb that fact.
The fence that she's referring to is not gonna be the same one, the fence that, we, we put that there when we first moved in. It was just something to keep the dogs, so they go outside and go to the bathroom, but that's way on the other end of the property. The fence I'm actually gonna have put in is gonna be put in by the same people who put the fence on the hospital property, which they know to build down, and the, the piece of land is gonna be flat, where the other fence is up on a hill. And Kylie dug, 'cause she was outside. I mean, they were outside while we were at work all day, so this, dogs dig and get out when there's nobody watching them, when there's nobody to make sure that they're not getting into mischief, and that's what I'll be there for, is constant observation and constant, like, playing and keeping them happy. So, their, their owners get their money's worth, 'cause it's not, it's not cheap to go to daycare, it's thirty dollars a day, you know, so it's, I definitely don't want people to think, well, I'm not getting my money's worth, 'cause my dog's barking all day, like, you know what I mean? So, and if anybody, like I said, if I did have a barker, they would be inside, we would, we would stay inside. If it was raining out, we would stay inside, that's why I wanted to build out the basement, so that way, it's a fun area to be in, we can have toys and stuff, and then, you know, try to, like, keep everybody as quiet as I can.
This fence that you're putting up, it's gonna be a six-foot chain link?
Yes.
Around the entire property where the dogs are gonna?
Where they'll be, it won't be around the entire property, but it'll be around the area, yes.
The area that you're gonna put the dogs in while you're babysitting them during that timeframe?
Yeah, it'll be like an indoor-outdoor kind of an area, 'cause the basement door, I have a walkout basement, so the basement door, um, will go out to the section of the fence, and then go up to the right, so it'll be able to be, I, if they'll be outside, and then they can come back inside. So, it'll be very indoor-outdoor kind of a stuff.
Okay, so, but this being a six-foot chain length, the dogs are not gonna be able to get out of this area?
No, no.
Unless you've got one that can jump over six feet.
Right, in which case, we don't want him.
I'm not sure Drake can do that.
I've, I've seen, I've seen a, like, half mixed wolf do it, but that was a long time ago.
Your dog is Drake, right?
Yeah, no, he's a big, he's a big baby, he's a, he won't, he won't jump through it.
He won't jump over that six-foot fence, okay. I'll have to do a site to, to see this before I can make a decision here.
The fence isn't there right now, but I can get, um, what it'll look like, I can have pictures and stuff.
Any more questions?
Actually, I was gonna ask, can you get, from whoever you're going to have the fence put up by, can you get some product information for us, some specifications?
Absolutely.
You, I, somewhere in this letter, I think there was a point about you'd put some privacy slats.
Yeah.
On the fence?
Yes.
We'd like to see what that's gonna be.
Absolutely.
For the abutters, we're gonna take your concerns seriously. Our, our job though is to, if there's mitigation being offered for your concerns, is to look at it and see if, um, if the mitigation is gonna work. I don't know if we're ever gonna be able to do anything about barking dogs. This, one of my neighbors leaves his dog out all the time, it drives me crazy, barks all night, but nothing I can do about it. The dog barks. And, um, there's nothing to prevent any private homeowner from having ten of their own dogs, I don't believe, is there?
Yeah, they do.
What, what prevents it?
The bylaw.
From having ten of your own dogs?
Absolutely.
What's the maximum you can have?
Four.
Okay, I stand corrected, so you can have four. But they all bark, so, um, we'll do the best we can to see if, if the mitigation that she proposes for the issues are gonna do what you guys would like it to do. The, the, the fact that it's allowed in the zone, whoever wrote the zoning back then. It's a special permit, so that means it's allowed. It's allowed by a special permit from the board, if it was not allowed, it would have an N in the column. So, it is an allowed use, um, by special permit, so we just have to make sure under the special permit procedure that we do those things a special permit requires us to do. Make sure that it's not a nuisance, make sure that it doesn't, um, have a detrimental effect on your property values, and make sure that all the concerns of, um, the technical people in town are, are addressed.
So, a site visit proved to you that it's not detrimental to us?
By getting, by looking at how close your property is, by looking at the condition of the other properties in the neighborhood, by looking at how close the other similar types of business are to the neigh- to the neighborhood, and to the, but we'll, we'll get a sense of just how tight the neighborhood is. And that'll go a long way in, in helping us evaluate whether this kind of a use would be detrimental. It might help us to go look at other ones also. If there are really ten of them around, or six of them within ten miles, I'd like to know where they are, if they're in Carver, I'd like to see them. I think this is a big issue, and, uh.
Do you have a list, anybody? Yeah.
If you could, if you're, you said there, if you can let us know where they are, and if they're in Carver, and if we could see what their settings are, and we can.
They're all in a business zone appropriate area, none of them are in a home zone. And like you said, I understand, when barking, there's different levels of tech. Providing it as a business doesn't seem fair to the people that are gonna be impacted, and that's our concern.
I, and, and I'm serious, we're gonna take your concerns here, we have to with every special permit. So, I, that's why I think looking at a similar situation in another neighborhood would help me. I don't know if anybody else feels that way, and if they don't, I'll go on my own, if I can, if I can be told where, where you think they're located. I'd like, I'd like to see them.
Are there any in Carver?
Not residential ones, no. They're all in the business zone.
In, in Carver? I'm sorry?
They're groomers, they're not daycare.
Oh, they're groomers, okay, but there's not a day- a daycare?
The, the one that offered that it was, I will check, I will call and confirm with them again.
Yeah, if.
I think the dog officer would probably, would probably know.
If I can get anybody, just send me what you got for locations. And, you know, there's a big difference, obviously, from a kennel that allows grooming and overnight and all that, as opposed to a doggy daycare, regardless of where it is, but that's what we're looking for, is doggy daycares, right?
Yeah. I mean, there was a point made in, in, in the documents that were submitted, that there's no need for this. There's not a market need for it. I'm not sure a market need is anything the planning board is ever supposed to look at, anyway.
Not really.
We're not really supposed to look at whether there's a market.
Everything else you mentioned, you are.
People have the right to, if they have the vehicle to do it, they have the right to make their, their own economic decision, but.
I do, sorry, I do have one question, though. If this does go through, um, and every business starts off small, what does prevent them from opening up on the weekends, or opening up and letting them keep them overnight?
We can put it in the conditions.
Conditions on it, and then, and then it's up to the enforcement in the town to enforce it. In that case, it would be the, um, the dog officers, and if they're not around, and you see things happen on the weekend, it would, you'd, you'd call the local authorities.
Is that the same for noise, so if we're continually, like, we continue to call?
If, if this was approved.
Right.
If it was, it'd be a special permit under zoning ordinance or bylaw, and it would be the building commissioner and the, and the animal control officer who would be the enforcement officer. And if they could shut them down, and they, and the planning board has done that for other, I, I don't think we, oh, we've had one kennel, but that was a, like, a real kennel.
But we've had people who have violated the conditions of this special permit, and it gets back to us, and we have the right to.
Right.
Bring them back in and find out what's going on, and then if it happens, we can have the permit.
Absolutely, and you've done that. You try not to, you know, you try to. Can I ask one more question of the animal control officer? Have we ever had any complaints on this address?
No, their dog, one of their dogs got, was about four years ago, I believe it was one of the huskies, I don't even know if it's, if he still have it.
Um, no, Kylie, the one that, she got arrested. She, she went to Lakeville, yeah, yeah.
Like I said, once about four years ago, I did pick their dog up.
She's an old lady now.
All right, so, uh, anyone else would like to speak? I'm seeing no one else. Well, let's set a date for the, uh, site visit, and then set a date for the, uh, continuance.
You're looking for October ninth, Jack, you think, for a site visit?
Yes.
October ninth work for you?
Yes.
How about you guys?
October ninth is.
Tuesday?
Tuesday. Yeah, that'll work, next, uh, next Tuesday.
At what time, five?
Five will work for me.
Getting dark.
Getting dark early these days.
Six o'clock, it's dark, so.
Five.
No later than five.
Can I ask the applicant a question?
Sure.
Would it be okay if the residents came as well?
Absolutely.
Can you make it at five?
What time do you get home?
Uh, that night, I have my training, so I won't get home until a little ten o'clock tonight.
Why? Oh, you're working at home now, so you'll be there.
We, uh, have a site visit October ninth at, uh, five PM.
Second.
Motion second, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Continuance?
Okay, continuance. I guess the sixteenth. I'm gonna say seven thirty-five. You have a hearing at seven fifteen and seven thirty, but I believe that.
What are the two hearings?
You're gonna have a CDBG hearing I'm scheduling for you at seven fifteen, and you have Rocky Meadow. But I believe, I'm not sure of this, but I think Rocky Meadow's gonna withdraw, I don't know that.
And what about the continuance we have coming after this? Is that gonna be continued then?
Yeah, it's correct.
This is probably gonna take some time.
I agree.
So, I'm not sure, we should.
So, maybe you wanna make this one seven forty-five.
We're gonna get them all, we're gonna get them all heard that night?
Yeah, yeah, oh, yeah.
Well, if Rocky Meadow doesn't show up, then.
You haven't been around.
Oh, I haven't.
You, you don't think Rocky Meadow will be prepared?
I don't think so, but I could, you never know, they have every right to, but I don't think so.
So, what's the?
So, the only thing you're gonna have is my CDBG. Seven thirty G, which will take ten minutes, and you're gonna have this, and the next one that we're gonna talk about after this.
So, seven thirty-five.
Yeah, that sounds right.
That would be my, no, I would say put these guys at seven, yeah, seven thirty-five, yeah, you talked me into it.
So, this is sixteenth?
Make a motion to continue the public hearing for, uh, October sixteenth at seven thirty-five.
Second.
Seven thirty-five, the sixteenth here.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sophie. Thank you.
The applicant could have any of the technical information she's gonna submit? Like fencing, all that stuff?
Oh, yes, um, some of the things that I've gotten down here is Monday through Friday, no overnight screening of the fence, we'll need an example, vaccines, licenses, trash pickup, no grooming, rules of operation. It would be very helpful if we could have those rules of operation as soon as possible. No feeding, dog license, number of dogs, um, are we including your own dogs, that kind of thing, and then.
She already agreed to that.
And I'm going to, for Ms. Hanlon, um, find out about the local bylaw on noise, it's not a zoning issue, but it's a bylaw.
And the dog licenses?
That I got already.
You got that, okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything you can do to talk.
All right, so we'll go to the, uh, public hearing continuance for Post-Road Operations LLC.
You'll see a, a little email from the applicant saying that the trustees and him would like to continue for two more weeks. They have a couple issues still amongst themselves in their private agreement, and I know that the trustees would prefer your decision to happen first. That's really not anything to do with the trustees, but, um, John has asked for another two weeks, and I don't see a problem.
So, the sixteenth?
Yes, sir.
Seven forty-five?
Correct. Motion to continue the public hearing to the sixteenth of October at seven forty-five.
Second.
Could you just hold it right there while we're in discussion? I put in your packet, there's a declaration of restrictions, this is the deed restriction that will be held by the planning board. This is a revised one that John Goldrosen and I worked on. I want you to make sure you take this and look at it, I also emailed it to you.
Yeah, I see, I read this.
This will be attached to any decision and to the plan that I also emailed to you. And I also added to your packet the draft bu- um, decision, I did add some things. Ms. Hanlon wants something to tie this to the original decision, and I'm gonna work on that, that'll be condition number three.
You got the original footprint.
Yep.
Thank you.
And, um, I've gotta tie this decision to the deed restriction, and obviously to the bond and the phasing. So, I think we're close, very close, I think it's just a matter of language, really.
Question for you, Jack, is that all right, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
One of the emails you said sent, that since this has taken so long, there'll be no construction now until the spring, and he's looking for an additional extension of the permit.
That's correct.
And your reaction to that?
His initial request was to two thousand sixteen, he's now asking to two thousand seventeen.
To the end of two thousand seventeen?
Correct.
And are they okay with that?
I think that's one of the issues they're having.
Okay.
I'm not that privy to this, this is between them two right now. Personally, professionally, it doesn't matter to me that much, but it's up to you, really. But that is a change he's asked for, you're absolutely right. It's something to think about.
All right, so, uh, did we, did we move to, uh, to grab the continuance?
Not yet, you're in discussion phase.
Question on twenty-seven. It's, uh, you know, I'll read it prior to the insurance of the bu- of a building permit, the remaining, for the remaining construction. The existing perfor- performance bond shall be released. I think we should have a number in there for what that amount is.
Yep.
And the applicant shall post a new performance bond in the amount of seventy-five, seventy-five hundred dollars, and that should be in cash. Specify that in cash, please.
We doing an account?
That's what, that's what, we only take cash from bonds. But I guess my clarification on this is a prior, prior to the insurance of a building permit?
Issuing, yeah. Well, you have seventeen thousand right now, so before you can get a building.
So, if he doesn't go for a building permit in three years.
You still have seventeen?
The money that's still sitting there stays there.
Correct. He can't get a building permit until, till he issues you a new bond, and we rel- and then we'll release it, we'll do a sign.
Okay.
And since I wasn't here last time, the issue about the RNI account has been resolved?
Yes, in full.
Do we, we have additional monies in there now, or?
And he gave us two grand, one is to, uh, have John Goldrosen do the deed restriction, and the other we hold. and the other we hold for the final inspection, whenever that is, for fusilining.
But that won't come about until all the units have been built up?
Correct. And the seventy-five hundred won't be raised until all units are built.
Okay.
Okay, move the motion.
All right, we go to adjournment?
We have to vote. Oh, we have to vote?
You're in discussion to continue it to the sixteenth at seven forty-five.
Second.
You have a motion and a second, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now you can. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Uh, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye. Thank you.
Thank you.